The maintenance of the roads, the lights, the... no. No?
That's already been passed. There will be a landscape and maintenance district type of fee which the rest of town has already. For the newer development, it's going to shift to a special tax versus this is a other assessment that's levied right now. So that's one thing that's sort of separate. What we're talking about tonight is financing certain of the public infrastructure by selling bonds. And then having those 596 homes pay the bonds off with taxes over 30 years on their homes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to just briefly respond to some... Whether it ends up being 1.8, 1.9, 2.0, the home purchaser still gets to make the decision. It's not like we're forcing it on them. If they think it's too high, they go somewhere else. You know, if they think mountain house is worth the 2%, maybe they buy here. I mean, ultimately, these infrastructure has to be paid for, right? And somebody has to pay for it. So if this homeowner A comes in and they say, "Oh, 2% is too much." Guess what? Move on. Somebody else will buy this house. I mean, you're right, market forces, so the million and the million 1.5 that I used, those are arbitrary, of course. Yes, the money's going to move, the prices are going to move up and down. But whatever it is, if we don't pass the Melrose, the developer has to front more money. Well, they're going to have to charge more. And if, you know, the prices drop so low that they can't make money, guess what? They're not going to build any houses. So, I mean, at some point, this, I think overall, this still, you know, it's not like this is 100% better. But even if it's 10% better, it's still better than the original option, right?
Yeah, we don't get that long, we don't get that kicker of additional maintenance dollars. We don't get the maintenance dollars within the 30 years.
No, I know, I believe this is beneficial. I'm just saying, it doesn't have to be this much different. Even if it's 10% better, it's still better than the previous option. You can come up, Arjun, if you want.
And just to clarify that if you're buying a new house in San Joaquin County these days, it's going to have probably a higher tax elsewhere.
Yeah, it can go both ways. The home prices can go up, right? So that can be like 200, 300 K. Right now, when I bought my home, it's like, way like half a million. Now it's like a million. So same thing, then your taxes are going up anyway, right? Based on the new price of your home. So there is no such thing that what Andy is saying is right. Because if I am buying my home, I don't care what my tax is. I want to buy that home, I go there and they will give me all the numbers.
I mean, you may care a little bit, but still, it's a small...
But two percent, see, they have to disclose it. When I went for my buying my home, they disclosed this is the 2% of the tax. So if I like and put the numbers and they have to show me the numbers, my first payment is going to be my first property tax going to be into the payment. So when I see my tax payment, I know whether I want to buy the home or not. If I'm spending a $1.5 million home, you think I'm going to wait for that extra $2,000 or $5,000 to be, not to make my decision not to buy the home? So I think that makes, you know, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, and, you know, my own example, when we bought a mountain house, the same house in Livermore was one double the price. So, you know, even though the taxes were a little bit higher at mountain house, you know, $1,000 versus, you know, half, $600,000 more in Livermore. So if they come to mountain house and they say, "Oh, your tax rates are so high," they move on to River Island, guess what? It's higher. So Tracy Hills, it's higher. Well, guess what? Those are your choices. You're going to pick the best house you can find, you know, with the money. And yeah, if you can't afford it, you can't afford it. I mean, that's, it's the, you know, the way the market is. We can't, we're not going to make every house affordable for everybody. But we are, I think, making the district better by saving some money for, I mean, a little bit of money, not a ton, but we're saving money for these residents in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Disco.
Thank you. So to put Mr. Maury's comment on, you know, market fluctuation in contrast, right? So if the house goes for over 1, it's in that 4,000 range, right? But what if the market crashes and that new house goes down to 700? Are they locked in to that rate from the day of purchase? And if so, you know, it goes both ways. If the housing market explodes and all of a sudden that, that, you know, $1 million house goes to 1.3 at the gate from the day the keys are ready to surrender, then it maintains that, what, 1.81, is it?
No, that's not, that's not how the tax rates work, Matt. If you go from $1 million to $2 million and your taxes stay the same, where the special tax part, your tax rate actually drops.
Right, and if prices go down...
How is it, how is it gauged? From the data purchase or, you know, the market value of the data purchase? Or what is valuated when we, when we put the stamp on?
Well, there's the, there's the prop 13 percent.
It's not based on, the CFD is not based on value, it's based on the size of the house.
Yeah, so that doesn't change. It stays 4,500, whatever, for the 30 years. So if your house doubles in value, your tax rate goes down. So if your house doubles in value, your tax rate goes down because the actual number of dollar...
So if the market crashes, then...
The tax rate goes up. The tax rate does not stay still like everybody thinks or a lot of people think. It changes day to day. You know, every day, your housing value changes, your tax rate changes.
But we're talking about a Melrose, right? Which is a different form of taxes. It doesn't really follow the uniform.
Yeah, but if the Melrose, the Melrose is going to stay the same for the next 30 years. When your housing price changes, your tax rate will change with that.
Because you're paying, the bottom line, the Melrose is to pay your percentage of a bond. It's not based on the value of your house, it's based on the size of your house, and then you lock that in at the beginning of the 30 years. If house values were to drop in half, your Melrose would not change. We had situations in Lathrop where prices went down 80%. The Melrose remained the same, but the property tax portion went down significantly.
Yeah, that's the confusing part because there's, there's the Prop 13 changes, but the rest, the Melrose and the special taxes don't change, so...
So at the end, so at the end of the day, that 150,000 upfront is indebted on whoever the buyer is that can't make their mortgage and loses the house at whatever market crash, right?
I don't, was that a question?
So, no, I'm looking for clarification. So if the builder pays 150 upfront, 150 K upfront, and adds that, or assumes the 150 upfront, right, versus the Melrose, and...
No, the builder doesn't, either way, the homeowner pays. The homeowner pays the 150,000 upfront or they pay it over the next 30 years.
The builder's out of it at close of escrow.
Yeah.
Got it.
So again, long term, I think this benefits the home buyers. I mean, not by a lot, but some amount. So anyways, any other comments or discussions on my right, left? No? Can I get a motion to...
I, well...
Do you have a question or comment?
Well, yeah, I do have a comment. I am all for the CFD facility because it is the best way, best way to go. However, I do believe, as started out earlier, that we should have total disclosure or transparency so people will know what it is that they're getting into. And I know when you're signing on papers, there's 950,000 pages and you initial on the bottom, that people are drawn to looking at it.
I think you might be comforted to know that one of the improvement areas that we're annexing in, which is not what we're talking about tonight, but there are more homes going to be built in the future, we had a sort of, I don't want to say rush, as if we didn't do a good job, but it was a pretty quick process. We had to jump right on it because they were about to start showing homes and we didn't have the disclosure put together because we hadn't formed the district. So we went for the new improvement area. So we already went about forming the new improvement area in order to give the information to this particular developer. So when they started showing their homes, they could tell the prospective buyers in accordance with the law that this home will have a Melrose tax on it. And this is about the range that tax will be when you buy your house.
So people always throw in this lack of transparency, but it's not our lack of transparency. We're not the ones obligated to tell the home buyer.
I do realize that. But as I said, when people are buying a home, they're excited about the home moving in, the purchase, and many times, you're looking at the sticker price, but you're not looking at everything that goes along with it. And that's what I'm talking about, is letting people know that in order to live in and enjoy this home, these are some of the additional things that you're going to have to pay to go along with. So they know, I'm a budgeter, so they know each month how much they're going to have to pay to live in the beautiful city of Mountain House.
But that's what the realtors and the salespeople are supposed to do.
I know. All I'm saying is that let people know upfront and then the illness is upon them. You sign off on it and you know it is upon you and it doesn't...
And we have talked to the builders and they are doing that. And we are going to be doing some secret shopping as well to ensure it.
Yeah, because sometimes they forget...
Well, it's no secret now.
No, they sometimes, they sometimes sell...
They won't know when it's us, but we'll be checking everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Secret shop.
If we don't have any more comments, let's move on and make a motion.
I make a motion that we, you want to put the recommendation back up so we can hit every bullet point?
Just adopt the resolution, 8.2.
I make a motion that we authorize, okay, I make a motion that we approve, I'll make it easy, approve 8.2.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Disco?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tingle?
Aye.
Mayor Sue?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous?
Thank you, Dan. Is that Ralph? All right, should we move on? What time is it? 9:12? Wow, way behind schedule. Veterans, 9.1 is Veterans Recognition Committee update. Jody? There you are.
All right, good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Jody Elmassey, Deputy City Manager. Tonight, we have before you a quick update of the Veterans Recognition Project. All right, so tonight, it's just a discussion item. We are just going to do a quick overview. We'll cover project location, chosen design amenities, part of the community engagement, cost implications, fundraising, and of course, next steps for our timeline. All right, so walking back through a couple of meetings ago, we'll take you down memory lane. At the November 2024 City Council meeting, council identified the need to honor veterans and agreed to launch the Veterans Recognition Project. And so with that, it was decided and recommended that an ad hoc committee would be best used to facilitate priorities and making sure that we're aligned with the city council's goals. And so at the December 11th meeting, city council appointed Mayor Sue and Councilmember Dan Harrison to this ad hoc committee. All right, so walking through some of the key elements, project location. This project is set for a half acre site for future parkland. This site was chosen because of the ease of expansion and ease of utilities. So again, this is a future park site. This is at the terminus of Grand Avenue. This is next to the Safeway Retail Shopping Center. All right, and so let's talk a bit about community engagement. To date, we have had two ad hoc committee meetings. The first one on January 16th, the second on January 27th. And so again, this was a focus forum to discuss design options and budgetary considerations. So with that, the committee actively saw input from the community. The stakeholders that were engaged are most prominently veterans themselves. So again, it was a reflection of their own experience and their priorities for this project. And again, this is all used to shape the aesthetics and the functional use of this park site. With that, some of the key elements of engagement was the issue of a community survey. It was issued through the month of January and we had 30 responses. Some of the highlights of that survey is there was a need of prioritizing all active duty personnel as opposed to those that we had maybe lost in war. Also, there was a strong sentiment of wanting to incorporate an art piece and then, of course, military flags. Some of the name ideas that were thrown out, but was prominent, was the name of Mountain House Veterans Liberty Garden. All right, into the design amenities, so again, future park site. So already know that, you know, for a standard park site, you're going to have turf, irrigation trees, landscaping benches and what have you. And so with that, there is a consideration to make sure that we're minimizing throwaway and that this site is going to seamlessly integrate into the rest of the community park. So with some of the amenities that were chosen, let's go ahead to the next slide. As part of this ad hoc committee, the themes that were most prominent were the idea of personalized paver bricks. This would be in lieu of standard hardscape. These are bricks that can be personalized, perhaps purchased by residents of the community, which we'll talk about a little bit more later on. And then, of course, concrete seat walls as opposed to standard park benches, something that is a little bit aesthetically more pleasing. And then stone walls that would be able to display all branches of the military with a plaque. And then the next one, you know, on the slide deck, we have military artistic statue. What I wanted to point out that was a healthy discussion as part of the ad hoc committee was that the importance of incorporating some kind of art piece that would reflect civic pride and honor veterans, but would also not isolate from any single branch of service or any particular war. And so with that, again, maybe something perhaps abstract or something that could be considered a little bit more in depth as the design progresses. And then flagpoles, and then, of course, ornamental landscape, flowers and trees. Onto cost considerations. So outside of a standard park site, we are looking at what is that added cost to incorporate the enhanced features? And so based on just a very rough preliminary cost estimate, this is very rough conceptual design, the approximation is roughly $105,000. And so again, I want to say it's preliminary. As design progresses, we'll have a better handle on what that true cost would be. All right, so how do we bridge the gap for that added cost? Some of the ideas that were discussed through this project ad hoc committee were the idea of the brick fundraisers that we mentioned earlier. We approximate like 1,000 square feet of area that could be used to support the brick fundraiser. Also, there is some thought towards reaching out to private partnerships for sponsorship. And then, of course, maybe in collaboration with our county board of supervisors, opportunities for use of discretionary funding that they have access to. We're also working to explore federal and state grant programs. All right, so next steps and timeline. Looking at how we kind of get through the next few months, we have to probably work a little bit more on what that true concept is. I think there's opportunity, once we nail down some of the conceptual design, to take it out to the community, looking at maybe stakeholder meetings, more surveys to provide what that true vision is, to really get a little bit more input. And then, of course, actively pursuing funding opportunities through what we mentioned on previous slide. And then with that said, it would move into a more detailed design concept. And looking at, you know, the million dollar question is when could you break ground? Based on a very tight timeline, it would probably be fall, end of 2025 calendar year. All right, so fiscal impact, again, just reiterating, the delta or the increase cost for the enhanced amenities is roughly a little over $100,000. And we'll work on that number as we refine the design. And then lastly, recommendation, at this point, this is really a discussion item and a progress update.
Actually, we did want the council to give approval, it may not be the right word, but give consent to move forward to fundraise. That was one of the asks. Because the goal is to try to raise the 105,000 so there's no actual fiscal impact. I mean, if we're a little bit short, we may come back, but just the papers itself, I think we found a company that sells, where we would sell them for $100 and the cost to us is $20. So if we sold 500 papers, that generates $40,000. And then we're going to probably talk to some of the major developers, you know, in town. And I think some of them already pledged some money. So the goal is to make it cost neutral. So, but we wanted, oh, we wanted the council's blessing to move forward to start fundraising and fine tuning the design. Any questions so far?
I have a question. I do think the papers or the bricks are a good idea. But my question is that in the garden or the celebration area, where do you, is there any plans on what you, where you plan to put the papers? I mean, how will they be placed or done? Will they be in the garden or will they just sit someplace and you could visit them?
I don't think we've...
Vice Mayor, I think, yeah, I don't think we're quite there yet. And so that's probably the next steps of going towards more of that minutia in the design of where pavers are, where trees are, how the amenities are actually laid out. That's what we would like to take back to the public.
Amanda, can you put back one of the pictures? Can you, so, no, not go back, more, to the map? The original, which map? Yep, one more, there. So there are some walkways in there. You see the round circles, those are trees? So some of the papers could line those walkways, like right, right there. I mean, we haven't, the final design, we haven't, but the idea is to put papers somewhere in the area.
And I do think that's a good idea and that's what I'm getting to. Will there be displayed? Because in the past, we've done bricks and what have you and nothing happened to them.
We, we've done bricks?
We did that at the school.
The school, not us, yeah.
Yeah, well, the school.
Wickland, but that's not us, yeah.
But it's, it was a project. And what I'm getting at is that they're still sitting in a cabinet.
No, I think the idea is like, you know, in Disneyland where...
I like the idea of where it can go. I just don't, I just want to make sure that it ends up going someplace and not just sitting in a cabinet someplace.
No, no.
No cabinets. Harrison, did you want to add something? No. Green?
I think it's a great idea. I love, I don't know if the name is official yet or not, but I love that it's called Memorial Garden.
It's not called the Memorial Garden.
Well, in my paper, it says...
Which page?
I don't know. Put it on the screen. I know I saw something say garden.
No, we, garden, Liberty Garden. We specifically didn't want to make it a memorial.
Liberty, okay, so my point was I like the garden.
Yeah, Liberty Garden, yeah.
Yeah, 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 that's what...
Well, that, we, how many responses for that? We put it out to the public.
What did, what did you have up there?
It's Mountain House Veterans Liberty Garden.
That, thank you. I like, I like that it's called the Liberty Garden. That was something that was initially discussed. I think that it is a great idea. So far, looking at the plans and stuff that you guys have put together, my desire is that it is a place of peace for all veterans. You know, a place where they can come and reflect for community, to talk to each other. You know, I think it's going to be a place for the whole community to enjoy. And to be able to fundraise is a great idea and hopefully we get enough money to cover that. But if not, maybe we can come up with some creative ideas to, to push this forward. But I do think it's a really good idea. I think you guys are doing some really good work on it and I appreciate you keeping us abreast on what's going on. Communication is key.
Thank you. Disco, are you there? Matt?
Yeah, I have no, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, so do I have the council's blessing then to continue to move forward? Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
I say that we move forward.
Okay, I think we got direction. We'll continue with this project. Thank you. Let's move on to city manager update. Did you guys put the three minute clock on? You did, all right, good job.
Amanda didn't put many slides in. I think she...
No slides. All right, tell us.
So here's our follow ups from...
Oh, yeah.
Last meeting. We're going to bring back the restroom in Parks and Kusun, and primarily Kusun a little bit, and I have talked to the folks with the traffic safety and road concerns and we are going to be following up on that. In fact, on the inquiry earlier, we talked about those zones around the crosswalks last meeting, but we'll follow up with that as part of the same concern when we bring it back to council in the future.
We actually don't have to paint them.
No, we do not have to paint them.
We can ticket them without painting them.
Correct.
In fact, painting them actually is a big project.
That's, that, that's a big, a lot of communities are having that debate right now.
Yeah.
Over how much painting you want to do. So anyway, and so again, and that dinosaur just came up randomly, but you can see the QR code can take you to the response as well, right? And where the dinosaur came from. If you haven't crossed the bridge to nowhere, so Jody, is it Saturday or Friday now officially?
Friday.
Friday, it's going to become the bridge to somewhere. The models are opening, the, are the sales office is opening on Friday or Saturday?
Friday.
Friday, the 14th, Valentine's Day.
No, Friday is the 14th, yeah.
So Valentine's Day, the, you can see the stripe... So Valentine's Day, the, you can see the striping has already been done out there, and we're going to open it up on Friday. If you want to go up across the bridge, pardon?
What time?
Eight o'clock, nine o'clock?
What time is it going to open?
What time?
There's no celebration.
No celebration?
Yeah, no celebration.
After 8:00 AM. Around 8:00 AM, the bridge will open up. And we will be blocking it off past the models, though, right? So, because there's a lot of construction going on up there, so we're taking a lot of precautions to make sure that when people cross the bridge, they're only going to look at the houses. And it's, right now, it's just a sales office. I think they're still a month plus away from models being open in that first, Lenar has, I think, eight model homes, 16 different models at this point in time, and they're opening up. Down in College Park, and also, there's a lot of other work going on in Neighborhood J right now as well for the additional home builders besides Lenar. And there's also portions of Neighborhood K that have moved along very quickly, and dirt's being moved in Neighborhood I as well. And then down in College Park, if you go down in College Park now, you've probably noticed that to the east of the school, there's a lot of activity, and I don't think we have a date yet for when they're going to be opening models in that neighborhood, but they're not far off either. And all these additional ones will be coming back for CFDs as well. This was just the first of a number of CFDs that's coming forward. And the College Park ones are being done to help expedite the construction of the Neighborhood Park in there. As far as civil improvements, yeah, A7, folks don't know as much about A7, but that's the west end of Nazar Goli. You can't see it back there, but there's a heck of a lot of dirt moving back there right now, and our staff is just nonstop looking at improvement plans and park plans right now in all these neighborhoods. But that's the view you'll see when you go out there Friday morning. That's Calabria, right? I think that's Calabria Way. You're looking down in Neighborhood J, and you can see, I think around 100 houses are under construction right now up there. And I think about 20 have been pre-sold and all made aware of the pending CFD. So the, the fire station is looking amazing, and let me know if you want to go take a tour. It's, it's at a point where you can really see it taking shape. Again, it'll be effectively done in the next couple of months, and we've got the fire truck we can put in there, and we've budgeted July 1 for it to be fully up and running. The pump station is just about done as well. And again, the, the bridge is going to be open. There's still lots of minor issues with the bridge, nothing that precludes it being used for construction traffic and things of that nature. But the, when it'll be all dressed up and ready to go is still probably a couple of months away. Just little items, nothing that will keep us from having the construction traffic and the model traffic, but it's, it's coming along. And then COVID's backed down. You can see it's at very low numbers at the moment. We didn't put it on here, but I'm sure folks who work in the emergency room can tell you, we still have a lot of flu in our wastewater system. We're still testing for that. You can see influenza A and B. You can tell when the, you can tell when kids go back to school. You can see when the big spikes are when the kids come back from Christmas break and things like that. You can see those little spikes in both influenza A and B. And so we think it's really good for us to do this kind of monitoring, and we're able to share it with some of the other agencies in the county. Any questions?
Wow, that was fast. Thank you. 10.1, report of future agenda items and long range calendar.
So first of all, a reminder that seven o'clock next week is our strategic planning session. We'll be getting materials out to you for the weekend to take a look at, but we look forward to a nice interactive session with you to update the strategic plan. Next Wednesday, we'll get some materials out to you ahead of time.
Can we do dinner at 6:30 next time?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It was a rush to get here today without-
Okay. Okay, so we'll start the meeting at 6:30, but we'll-
We can come eat at 6:30 and start the meeting at seven, yeah.
Yes, 6:30, 7:00, got it written down. The next meeting, we'll bring back the, the easy wave item at the next meeting along with the communications plan. We've got some speed limit surveys, some traffic we'll be talking about, we'll bring back for discussion if we get all the materials, the Neighborhood Park restrooms as well, social media policy that we could talk about. And then hopefully, Jody, we'll have the playground ready to go, hopefully at the next meeting for Bethany. And then we're putting the COG meetings on here now. And don't forget that the week after our next meeting is the Planning Commissioner Training in Santa Rosa.
Do you, do you have an emergency response or-
Yes, it is on the March 12th meeting.
Oh, okay.
Emergency Response Plan update, and we'll be hopefully come back with the tree removal on March 12th as well. And we're coming towards the end of our term with the French Camp Fire Contract, so we'll be bringing that back for a proposed renewal as well. All right, so that's all we had on the long range.
All right. Thank you.
I have a comment. Thank you very much. For the next meeting at the end of the month, I'd like to add, to provide three certificates to the outgoing youth council, youth council persons.
Which meeting are we talking about?
The last one in this month, the 25th, is it?
Right, and a reminder, it's going to be on a Tuesday, not a Wednesday, on the 25th.
The 25th, okay.
The three outgoing youth council members.
All right, so let's move on to 11.1, the mayor calls on each council member for comments. Councilmember Disco?
No comments, Stephen.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank my fellow council members for allowing us to move forward with the veterans project. And also, I wanted to make sure that residents know that, that we are not required to paint those sidewalks for, you know, I mean, sometimes we'll get community members that think, they come here with not all the facts, but they think, you know, when are you going to do this, you know, but we don't have to. But I do believe that the sheriff's office said they were going to start issuing citations in March. I think that's, and that was said at one of our prior meetings. So my suggestion is that people that come to these meetings, do your homework a little bit, look at past presentations that we've put on, because some of these items, we've already discussed, and then they come here with questions that we've, you know, if you looked at the meetings that were there, so I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
No comment.
Thank you. Council Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that CVGCA, in association with Kaiser, will be having their Heart Health Month on February the 23rd at Cuesta between the hours of 1 and 4 PM. And there's an ask for not only the city council, but also our city manager, if we could participate or come to that. They're asking for our response, so they would like for all the council members and the city manager to come in as they talk about healthy heart and get information on, healthy heart is a strong heart, but it's for the community, so everyone is invited, but they would like for us to show up.
Do you think, Steve, we can have Amanda send out something about the curbs? I mean, I bet a lot of people don't even know. Yeah, let them know that they can get tickets for parking, is it 20 feet? 20 feet from the curb, and it doesn't have to be painted, so as much education as possible before we start ticketing people. Yeah, we're moving forward. I think I'm very thankful for my council members who have attended some conferences recently, and I think it brings us closer together and makes us better governing, a better governing body, so thank you. And with that, let me send it over to-
I'd like to know who's going to attend on the 23rd.
Oh, you want to know now?
Yes, now.
Steve, are you going? Put you on the spot.
The date again?
Huh? Sunday?
Sunday, February the 23rd, Cuesta.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
What time?
Between 1:00 and 4:00.
I will check it out. I'll see if I can make it.
What's a CB, CB something?
Yes, it's the Central Valley, Gertha.
Okay.
Valley, okay. Councilmember Green?
She's there, yeah, yeah. I don't have it planned yet, but I probably can, yeah.
Okay. Harrison, yes, and Councilman Disco?
I already RSVP'd for all of us, so you guys are-
Oh, that's right, you already invited us for this.
Who did?
Matt already invited us like a couple of weeks ago.
But I was supposed to invite you. They asked me for the, well, if you were supposed to do that, Matt, you didn't get back them, get, get back to them with who's coming, so I'll do that for you.
I told them we're all coming, so all of you are now empowered to go.
Empowered.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I told them that I will do my best to make sure all of us are in attendance, so I did, I did extend the invite, though, a couple, two meetings ago, about a month back.
Okay, so I'll confirm, I'll confirm everyone.
Mine's a maybe, just because something, I may have something.
And then you'll-
Let you know.
You'll let me know, okay.
Okay, let's move on to 12. What was that, Matt?
You'll cancel the other thing.
What did he say?
You'll cancel the other thing so you can be there.
Yeah. City Attorney John Barker?
I don't have anything to say, David.
All right, city manager?
Just real quick, the, the town hall and library will be closed for President's Day on Monday. Forgot to put that.
All right. Well, with that, we are adjourned to next Wednesday, 7:00. I'll figure it out. 6:30 for dinner. No, it's Wednesday. Tuesday is the week after.
The 19th.
19th and 25th, yeah. All right, meeting adjourned.